Well done.
Thank you.
Don, do you want to say anything?
I was just took the words out of my mouth.
Oh, my God!
The camera's right on you.
Yeah, I know. My nerves, I might have been able to keep my pose during the interview rounds, but I'm more nervous tonight, I think. Just knowing that I'm surrounded by my family and such great colleagues and the leadership team, I'm so excited to be part of this team and I'm so excited that I'm a member of this district and I really, there's not to sound all too like a really bad response when someone wins an award, but there are people I want to say thank you to, but it's so horrible. I'd like to thank the Academy, no, I'm kidding. But the interview process was rigorous, but with that, there was such a large diverse representation of our school community, down to teachers, parents, people that aren't here tonight, that they really need to be acknowledged because it really, it's what made the interview process so great and it meant a lot to me, sitting on this side of the table and being interviewed. It just speaks volumes to what Madison holds in high regard and it is a full school community. So that process was done extremely well, to echo some of the other comments from before. Also, just to be joining such an incredible leadership team, Cindy, who also isn't here, but from the moment this process started, I just, I felt the support along the way and every step of the way, I knew that I was like making the right decision and I knew that this was a team that I was really excited to join and I really look forward to continuing my career, working besides these two and also Gail and Tom. Gail, I won't leave you. I will still be, be your math girl, it's okay.
It's on film now.
It is, it is, I'm committed. And then my family, this is where I get like all emotional, but my family truly, because I think it, this is a team effort and so when we decided, you know, what the next move was going to be in my career, it was a really, it was a big family decision and so I do have the full support of my husband, which means so much to me, and my kids are so excited, even though, you know, they just, they just say, "Mom's a principal," anyone they get to tell, you know, "Mom's a principal." So, but it is really exciting to know that this is sort of like a package deal, you know, we came to the musical this weekend and he left and he's like, "That was awesome." And so it's just nice to know that I can kind of bring them in to my job and show them, you know, just what means so much to me and let it, you know, mean so much to them too. So, okay, that's it. Thank you all so much, thank you.
Congratulations. We're so excited. Okay, so now...
Uh, we'll move to executive.
Yep, I need a motion to go to executive session.
Second.
Second, thank you.
So we have some folks here who are here for recognitions. We'll be in executive session for a few minutes in the other room and going to be coming back shortly, so just sit tight and we're gonna shake hands.
But Melanie and family.
Wish you the best.
It's fantastic. (laughter) The Rock's track seats, 24/7, September 11th.
Yeah, yeah. (inaudible). We did ask, we didn't put the dates in. Yep.
(inaudible).
Oh, in there?
(inaudible).
Okay. Okay, we're back. So moving on, we have some recognitions.
We have some recognitions and lots of guests tonight, lots of guests, so I'm not going to introduce everybody and I am going to ask for our program coordinator and Matt, Bill Summer, to help here. I do not want to butcher the Scholastic Arts Awards and the Future's Choices, so I'm going to do my best and you're going to clean up my mess, right?
It's getting messy.
Okay, great, all right. So, I think that it goes without saying, this is a community that's incredibly committed to the arts. The board has supported the arts program year over year, teachers, we got incredible recognition, I see a lot of our folks here, I see Greg Gallo, Bob Del Russo, Suzanne Gaskell and Bill Summer, we have our art teachers here in the room as well. Wonderful that you're all here and part of the recognition is not just the talented students, but also their work and above that, the board's commitment to supporting art education is part of the award. So I want to just make sure we go on record saying that as a community, how much we support this work here. So, I move on for hours. I got therapy up in the art room today, I spent about an hour up there. Claywheel, Miss Suzanne, Mr. Del Russo and I talking to Peter, we had a great conversation up there. Greg was on lunch, Greg was on hall duty, we talked for a little bit, yeah, so. But I'm gonna just give a little background, you have the Connecticut Regional Scholastic Arts Award Program, nonprofit, all volunteer activity. It's a program about arts education and it recognizes teachers as essential connection to the completion of successful student submissions. The program is a high-quality level, professional juried event, recognizes only the best Connecticut student artwork. All Connecticut art students in public parochial and private schools are encouraged to participate. Quite a wide pool of applicants and we also have students from private schools, independent and home schools that have opportunities to participate, so a big, big pool of kids. The artwork is juried by professional artists and university faculty and selected on merit for the inclusion in the statewide art exhibition, which is at the Hartford Art School. Beyond the honor of being selected for this high-quality exhibit, students may be, we have one, awarded gold or silver keys and honorable mentions and so forth. So, we have a whole lineup of recognitions. Bill, how did I do on that?
That was very good.
Okay, great, all right. So, for, for this Scholastic Arts Show, we have, Bill, do you want to do the student names, can you do that for me?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, come on up.
So, I'll read this out, so we have Alexandra Golenuck, who got an honorable mention for the Scholastic, Kayla Howard, I don't think is here, she got an honorable mention, we have Kyle Jasco, I think I saw her here, she got honorable mention here, Daniel Leach got an honorable mention, Grace Vest also got an honorable mention. Then we had two, we had Haley Delesio, who got a gold key and then, yes, that's...[415.12][415.12](applause) And then we have Dvorah Redlich, who also got a gold key, but she also got the Best in Show for her painting and then not only that, but she went on, they get jury nationally and she got into the national show, so...
(applause) I think it's two years...
Dvorah's been very shy. I've seen that, don't worry.
So I think it's two years that she has to go without the painting, we have a photo of it, but that's...
And you're going to Carnegie Hall.
Do you have a photo of that?
I do, let me show you, that's all I have.
Oh, my God. Oh, it's beautiful.
A photo of the painting.
Yes.
So, in addition, Future Choices, can I talk about that already?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Future Choices and the Best Arts Department, so for 35th year, right, Future Choices recognizes and celebrates the talent and passion of our region's high school students, is open to the high school level, 9 through 12, and the competition and exhibition is adjudicated by a panel of fine arts professionals. These are high, high-quality, highly rigorous processes. The students whose work is selected have their pieces displayed in the gallery show at the Silhouse Gallery at the Lyme Academy College of Fine Arts for three weeks, number of different categories, including ceramics, drawing, mixed media, painting, pastels, photography, prints, sculpture, none, I can do none of these, and video. The exhibition is free, open to the public. In addition, I love this one, the Judy Streeter Award, and the Judy Streeter Award is given to high schools and to staff, departments and school districts who are recognized for their efforts in keeping the arts a vibrant part of the curriculum. And that is such a testament to what happens, it probably feels inconsequential for board members, you're here every two weeks and you take action, but how consequential your work is connecting to the work that they do with the folks that are sitting out here. So on behalf of everybody, thank you so much, that is such a high recognition, thank you so much.
Can I add to that?
Yes, go right ahead.
Can I just say that they, so we had, I believe we entered 73, somewhere around that, 73 pieces to the show this year and out of those 73, 67 of them actually got in.
Wow.
So it was a huge show, it was basically a Daniel Hand art show.
Congratulations, that's a huge testament.
I also was doing a little digging and I saw for the artists, their work is reviewed by the panel of professional artists, is juried in the show, in the professional gallery, there's opportunities exist for, to be part of outreach and so forth, catalogs are produced with complete listings and there's an artist reception, which that was in February, correct, on the 21st, where everybody was recognized publicly as well, yeah, it's quite an opportunity.
Can I just add, the, this school is the one from 28 schools chosen, I mean it's just one award for all of those schools, it's just huge.
Thank you.
Can I, can I read the names of the students?
I have them right here, I'd rather you read them.
Okay. Because so, and I do have to say as well, and it's not in any sort of order, but as far as the video and animation, you know, Greg Gallo got them first, second and third place, so we had a clean... (applause) So we have Hannah Bues, who had an honorable mention for photography, Sarah Conroy got first place for in video animation, Haley Delesio again got an honorable mention in photography, Eric Dilner got second place in photography, Gabriella Doyle got second place in mixed media, Kyle Jasco an honorable mention in prints, Sedona Leach got honorable mention in drawing, Caitlin McCallum got second place in video and animation, Dvorah Redlich got third place in painting, Peter Santoro got first place in mixed media, Liz Schroeder got third place in video and animation, Nicholas Cireo got honorable mention in photography, Peter Santoro also got first place, did I say the, first place in mixed media, that's, sorry, I said that again, Liz Schroeder got third place in video and animation, Nicholas, yeah, I think I'm repeating something that I had. And Cameron Sharnott had third place in photography, so...
Congratulations.
Sarah, was your submission the same as your independent study project?
Yeah, that was the one.
Okay, so the board is going to love to hear this, so Sarah was an independent study student, she's kind of a regular, she may go on the payroll, she's been to enough meetings.
(laughter) Yeah. She did, indeed, and that was her submission, was the independent study project and Mom and Dad starred, I don't know if Dad, but I know Mom starred, yeah, Mom starred in the movie. Both, actually, yeah. Were you in it?
I was in it. You were in it? I played the dad.
Now you're typecast. So, that is an incredible connection from the work that you had done in the independent study to here and then to be recognized on this stage is remarkable, so. But for all, for all the folks here, and what's interesting is seeing some of these kids, I know the multiple talents they have, I mean Eric, Eric's an incredible ice hockey goalie in addition to the work he does in the arts, I mean I can go on and on, I mean the talent of the kids and I'm going to say it again, the folks standing up in the back that support them, thank you Mr. Dilner for pointing that out, the work you guys do is second to none, I'm glad you're, I'm so happy and proud you were recognized for that, thank you so much.
Can I make a shameless plug with all you budding artists in the room? The Friends of Madison Youth is putting on the Shrek Jr. production on May 3rd, 4th and 5th, I believe it is, and I know they're looking for crew right now, crew members, so if anybody wants to volunteer...
I mean, not a shameless plug, but I just want to congratulate you all on behalf of the board, you know, we live in such a stressful, fast-paced world and it's so great to see you be able to express in all these different wonderful, exciting ways and we get to benefit every once in a while from some of the work of the district here in this room, but you guys are out in the world doing major, major accomplishments, so thank you for sharing some of them with us and representing the district so strongly, so thank you.
And I think the kids will know when I say this too, the students will know this when I say this too, the relationship with the adults is something like I've never seen before, I walked into that, because I'm noisy, I walk into classrooms in the buildings in all six of our schools and I walked into Mr. Del Russo having an incredible conversation with Peter just about the future and about...
And you added to that because we ended up from fine art to...
3D printing.
Of...
Oh, of bodily organs in a hospital.
In hospital.
Yes, yes.
So the arts is really giving these kids opportunities into a lot of multiple career paths, it's not really just fine art, but we were talking about medical applications today.
Yeah.
And Greg does 3D printing at our facility with students, so they're getting exposure to the fusion of technology and arts, so we really appreciate that, you know, we're able to give them that avenue at Daniel Hand.
We appreciate it too, thank you.
I don't know how we take pictures.
Can we get the whole art department and all the students recognized right up front?
We could do it.
We could do it. Get them all up right there, we could get them in there.
Okay, Greg, Bob, Suzanne.
You guys have to stand up.
Bill, we have to draw a pride. Our teachers right here and then all the students who are recognized, come up as well, we're trying to get one nice picture. All right. I knew you wanted a little picture.
TJ knows. (inaudible).
All right, so we're very organized. So, going in horseshoe.
Do you want us to like circle?
Dvorah.
I'm so scared.
Well, you're all artists, you should have a picture of yourself. Can you get the swish in, go back a little bit, go back just a little bit?
Just watch the board.
No, I'm so sorry, I knew you were going to be upset.
Just watch all the wires.
I always scare.
All right, we have to squeeze in a little more.
Okay.
A little more.
A little more.
A little more. Like a few of you can go like, Mr. Gallo, go behind Mrs. Gaskell possibly?
Oh, no, that's...
We're the tall ones.
All right, everyone look at this camera, say cheese. That's lame. All right, we'll take another one, look again.
Artist.
Anyone else want to take pictures?
Yes.
Come on, Mom, more, Mom.
These will all be circles.
Mr. Sowers.
No pressure, Brian, check.
(laughter)
Good. You have something to add, everybody. That was just... Congratulations, guys. Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Summer, you're going to send me a little 140 character.
(inaudible). Right? Did I get you? Did I know that they wanted to get something that looked like...
Yeah.
You're a lot of...
Just watch all the wires.
I always scare.
All right, we have to squeeze in a little more.
Okay.
A little more.
A little more.
A little more. Like a few of you can go like, Mr. Gallo, go behind Mrs. Gaskell possibly?
Oh, no, that's...
We're the tall ones.
All right, everyone look at this camera, say cheese. That's lame. All right, we'll take another one, look again.
Artist.
Anyone else want to take pictures?
Yes.
Come on, Mom, more, Mom.
These will all be circles.
Mr. Sowers.
No pressure, Brian, check.
(laughter)
Good. You have something to add, everybody. That was just... Congratulations, guys. Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Summer, you're going to send me a little 140 character.
(inaudible). Right? Did I get you? Did I know that they wanted to get something that looked like...
Yeah.
You're a lot of...
Embarrassing everyone. Dvorah, I want to get a photo of you. Oh, sure. Who's your guy?
Do you want to send that side?
Nice.
So I need you guys to get a little bit together. All right. I'm pretty, I'm just pretty close.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Drive by the Taylor's Library.
Yes. So you didn't deserve it. (laughter)
They're our libraries. Yeah, go up here, we're doing this for quite some time now, right? We're working together for second year. Circulation, I'm not going to, I'm not going to the Jeopardy question, but she always points out to me that the circulation of our books increases even though our enrollment is going down. That is a remarkable data point.
Her, her, like her head.
Her head, yeah.
You know, the numbers are going down for a little while, let's give it a go.
He has less kids, but...
Her head, there we go.
It's going up, it's so exciting, so, yeah. The Diamond Secretary of...
Elementary.
So, National Library Week, the theme this year is Strong Communities, it was first sponsored in 1958, the National Observance, that's begun by the American Library Association, ALA, and libraries across the country each April celebrate the contributions of our librarians and how to promote library use and support. We have a wonderful team of librarians, one at each school and Dawn oversees, as well as being the pulls in media specialists, Dawn oversees the whole program, K-12, and those threads that go through and an incredible amount of work to connect into the classrooms, which I know is a big part of your work. Dawn, from my experience with conversations off-hours, was, I think, like the heavens opened when we adopted the Language Arts Curriculum, because suddenly you had these incredible connections to the classrooms and then the social studies curriculum was adopted and the team of teachers were teaching off the same curriculum.
Yeah.
And that really made...
Speaking the same language.
Yes, it is, all the research skills and so forth and that really, I think, created a space for you to do some incredible work for these last two years, so.
Very excited.
So we're going to thank you for your work.
Not every district supports their libraries the way this one does and I've been around and I'm very thankful to be home, as you said before, you know, I'm really thankful to be here, so.
So you know that one of the few things that we'll ever get to know is can we buy books and we always, that's, that's, you know, right in the sweet spot, of course, if we have funding, we're going to buy as many books as we can and you get them in the hands of kids, which matters a lot.
And they read them and they really do read them, I mean it's, and they have the time to read them and they're encouraged to and it's, it's an incredible environment to be in, you know, I have, we'll do book talks and have a bunch of football players sitting on the floor and, "Oh, I read that book, I love that book." Oh, it's great.
And the Language Arts model that we have, the workshop model of creating independent reading during the last period, that's when we saw a huge spike in reading.
Yes.
If they're really given time to read and do something with their books.
Yeah, and, you know, there's, especially at the 7, 8 level, I don't know, the other curriculum as well, but the 7, 8 curriculum, we're just, it's wide, the themes are wide enough that we can really get a wide variety, you know, it's not a couple of books to choose from, you get a wide variety of genres to, to appeal to them, so you can get a lot more kids buying in, so.
There's going to be a kid with long, long hair, looking like me, coming to see you for historical fiction, they just started that, yes, fun, fun.
He's like, I'm the only one.
Yeah, so into it.
We're ready.
So I think you're really incredibly proud of, and you want to share a port over your time.
Well, I'm thankful for my team, I really am, I'm thankful for my team, I have department meetings and, and they're very thoughtful and conscientious and want to do the best for their students and their teachers, you know, they're really, you know, you wear a hat, you're wearing more than just one hat, you're not just a librarian, you're a teacher and you're also an instructional coach in many ways and so I feel like we have a good, strong team of people that are taking on that role, sometimes you have to teach that role to people and they're taking on that role and really doing that, so I'm very proud of them.
Thank you.
And thank you. We're grateful for all you do, libraries are kind of a hub of any, and they're the hubs of the school, it's fun to see what happens in those rooms, kids in and out, back and forth, so, thank you. That's because you support us.
And I also happen to think that one of the most important 21st century skills that we try to teach is critical thinking and there's been a dearth of that in our civil discourse lately and so I really think that there's going to be a refocus and an emphasis, a renewed emphasis on reading and on critical thinking from, from reading.
So I totally agree with that and what I'm seeing now in the last few years, in particular with our nonfiction units that have come through, where I was, a couple of years ago, let's say five or six years ago, I've been here for 10 years now, I would be introducing bias in 8th grade, maybe the end of 8th grade, introducing the term, we were, I did a, I participated in that in the nonfiction unit in 7th grade and kids, it was not a new word for them, so like that, that's, that's a big developmental difference to kind of have that coming into their vocabulary that much earlier, so, that's happening, we're getting there.
So start being on the front lines.
Well, thank you, I appreciate all your support.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Happy, happy National Library Week.
Thank you very much.
I feel like we should apologize to the National Library for being introduced during the loudest part of the meeting.
I'm...
Right. A little bit of psychology there. You should...
Yeah.
Libraries are not quiet anymore.
Yeah, your library is not quiet, kids are humming.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Public participation, is there any member of the public that would like to speak? There are new students to report, so superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a brief update on the reconfiguration, we have, we had a great, you know, a big part of this is not just the movement and not just the assignments and so forth, but we're creating incredible new teams of teachers, some who've never worked with each other and who will rely on each other a great deal and our early release PD day last Tuesday, Gail, was it last Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday, yeah, last week. It was a ton of team building and development and getting to know each other and kind of forming these new grade level teams and we actually had the principals assigned to next year's school overseeing those processes, I got a chance to participate in a number of them at a few of the schools and folks are getting ready, you know, beyond moving the furniture and books and all that, the real work gets done when folks are together and they're looking at student work together and doing the heavy lift there, so that's a real key transition component right now. On the horizon, we have a number of principal visits coming up right over the, after the April break, we have Mrs. Spooner, Mrs. Frost, Mr. Henderson, Mrs. Hart, they'll be going out to their schools and, and meeting their, their incoming students, so we've broken it down by where kids are going, so they're with their students for next year and those teachers as much as we can can kind of do that as well. We have evening transition meetings coming up for parents to be critical as well, Mr. Henderson went out of his way, I thought was, he's so intuitive, he actually attended a couple of PTO meetings at Brown to say, "What do you want in a parent presentation?" Because I can come up with all these great things, but if it's not answering any of your questions, it's kind of a wasted night for all of us, so a number of principals kind of picked up on that as well, so those are right on the horizon. And then we have in May, student visits that'll be taking place and the K-1 and 2, the Island students, the 29th of May, for example, they go into Jeffrey, Grade 3 and Grade 4 from Island will go to Brown on May 14th and May 22nd and so forth, all the schools have the grade levels situated, we have some socials coming up in June as well and the PTO did a wonderful job, couple of opportunities for these cross-school kind of socials, which is nice too, so.
Can you share this on this...
This is on the website.
It is.
Yeah, we put everything on there.
So board members want to go, do a good thing?
Yeah, just go reconfiguration and it's in that, under that button and we're still obviously working off of the Gantt chart and chucking things off as they come. So far, I think we're pretty much in a holding pattern until the move takes place, it's more the, the people piece right now, but I, again, I said this earlier, you look, you know, to a couple of the towns that are going through these processes right now and I'm incredibly proud of the way the team has been handling it, the parents have been handling it, the board, the administrators, everybody, because this has been going through with really out of edge, not without emotion, there's a lot of emotion involved, obviously, but the processes have been supported and I think we are right on schedule to move forward and do our transition.
Great.
And Liz, you're part of the planning for Island as well, I'm going to do a plug on that, on the celebration.
PTO board at Island, yes.
Yeah, PTO board, so Island is doing, I think it's remarkable, they're doing a celebration as a part of recognition of almost 70 years of Island Avenue School, so that'll take place on June 8th.
June 8th.
Yeah, and it's going to be an incredible event, thank God.
You're all welcome, the community is welcome.
Yeah, it's wide open.
It's for all the parents, but we invite everyone to come and join us and just hang out and have nice...
Food trucks, right? Yeah. That'll always make people...
I was going to say.
Your fingers crossed for weather, because we like to keep the kids outside.
Yeah, it's good stuff, thanks for doing it.
I have just three items for other items that I'm just going to mention, two are sobering and I will leave on an uplifting one. We are working with the Country School, reached out, a couple, three years ago, we had a panel discussion on 21st century education, it's a parenting series, and now we have one called The Invasion of Innocence, How the Internet Is Influencing Social, Emotional and Sexual Development of Our Kids. everybody, because this has been going through with really out of hench. Not without emotion. There's a lot of emotion involved, obviously, but the processes have been supported, and I think we are right on schedule to move forward and do our transition.
Great.
And Liz, you're part of the planning for Island as well. I'm gonna do a plug on that, on the celebration.
PTO board at Island, yes.
Yeah, PTO board. So, Island is doing, I think it's remarkable, they're doing a celebration as a part of recognition of almost 70 years of Island Avenue School. So, that'll take place on June 8th.
June 8th.
Yeah, and it's gonna be an incredible event.
You're all welcome, the community is welcome.
Yeah, it's wide open.
It's for all the parents, but we invite everyone to come enjoy us and just hang out and have nice day.
Food trucks, right? Yeah. That'll always make people.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Your fingers crossed for weather, because we like to keep the kids outside.
Yeah. Good stuff. Thanks for doing it.
I have just three items for other items that I'm just gonna mention. Two are sobering, and I will leave on an uplifting one. We are working with the country school, reached out, a couple, three years ago, we had a panel discussion on 21st Century Education, and it's a parenting series. And now, we have one called "The Invasion of Innocence: How the Internet Is Influencing Social, Emotional, and Sexual Development of Our Kids." I was asked to serve on that panel with Claudia Calafano, Dr. Calafano, who works with our district quite often, Scott Cocker, Youth and Family Services, Bill Leek, Director of Technology at Country School, Beth Coyne, Assistant Head, Dr. Goldberg, who is our medical consultant in the district, James Stanley, who's Dean of Students at Cho, myself and a police officer. So, we have a quite an event planned. I'm gonna hand out a flyer. This'll be promoted quite heavily, I think, in the next few weeks, on May 2nd. And it's a, it's a topic that is, it's a topic that is, I think, as imposing as you could possibly imagine as a parent. And we have committed to delivering a very sobering message, but making sure people leave empowered. And that's our goal for that evening. Second sobering message, but there is, I think, another empowering backdrop to this. I had a long conversation, and I've been in contact quite a bit with Lisa Dean. Lisa Dean's a parent of a young man who she lost her son about a month or two ago. He's a graduate of Daniel Hand 2013. And she is, her passion, her energy is, it's humbling. Her strength is humbling. She has all of her efforts put into a program that she has titled "Demand Zero." So, it's really about stopping the opioid proliferation and the access that kids have to prescription medications and so forth. So, we talked for about an hour today, and I learned a ton. I was inspired by her. We've been talking quite often with the team to talk. And on, I think, an empowering note, she is, we're looking to support, to promote her efforts, and she'd like to do the same with efforts that we're trying to do with Youth and Family in the town to promote the 40 developmental assets that's been identified by a great body of research to be the deciding factor with kids when it comes to healthy lifestyles and healthy decision-making. These 40 assets, I see a kickoff event in our future, possibly early fall, to be a very powerful community event. I've been asked to write a call to action to the community and the source to kind of get energy around this. We have so many awareness campaigns, and I had asked if we can kind of pivot to more of a, what can we do about this campaign? And Catherine Bard and Tina Garrett, her maids, said, "There is a science behind this. If you have 20 to 21 or more of these 40 assets, the research shows that you will make much healthier decisions as you go through life." Now, they went a step further, and they showed the data of our own high school students. It was incredibly compelling. They showed what students self-report at hand. And if you have a high school student, you know, every two years we do a survey of every student, substance abuse, healthy and unhealthy behaviors and so forth. One out of every four students, remember they presented last year, reported moderate to severe anxiety or depression. And among all the other reports were substance abuse and usage and so forth. Catherine and Tina, her maids, showed a chart that actually had a bar, bar graph of kids that had these behaviors, these unhealthy behaviors, and then how few assets they have self-reported. And then as they reported more assets, the usage and unhealthy behavior bar went down. And those were our kids, not a national chart. So, I think we're onto something really powerful, and I'm honored to be asked to kind of help champion this with a few key people in town. And Lisa Dean was very inspiring, they just kind of encouraged me and the district and the town to keep moving forward.
That's great.
Yeah. So, I think, I think these things happen on the local level, things get done on a local level in small communities, and I think we'll see something there. That's it.
Okay.
Tom?
Board member comments?
Oh, okay. Am I waiting?
No, that's it.
Let me just charge.
That was your, yeah, go for it.
Tom, I know Scott's on this, I see Scott was a participant. Did he also share this with Tony?
He should be aware, Tony joined us on the, he's the chair.
He's the chair.
Yeah, who's been incredibly supportive of this work as well. And he joined us at one of our meetings on the 40 assets. If he's not aware, if Scott hasn't told him, we'll get it out. This'll be promoted far and wide. This is just, I just got this flyer today.
All right.
Yeah.
And on the other issue as well?
Absolutely. He's already plugged into that, and he followed up in a very impressive email about some strategic steps that we can take going forward.
Okay, good.
Yeah, he's been a wonderful voice around the table. Thank you for that connection.
Any other board member comments?
This could be maybe a yes or no answer, although it's fair. For the, just for my, the 40 developmental assets, is the ultimate pitch to educators that if your, if a student does not have them, that they could be acquired? This is a nature-nature thing, or?
Yeah, true. And when you see them, they're rather broad statements, and we've done some work already about what do we have in place right now. What my biggest takeaways, Tom, are that they are not owned by the parents only, the schools only, the community only. It is truly the ecosystem around a child. Do they have, one of the assets is, do they have a significant adult in their life outside of their family that serves as a positive role model? Like, simple statements like that. There's a huge body of literature behind each of those assets, but they're, they're phrased in a way for public consumption, so a community can wrap their mind around, "Well, let's get a program together with positive adults that can make a connection with kids." So, yes, they, the answer to your question is, they're not nature. They're certainly nurture.
Curriculum and Student Development.
Yes, the Curriculum and Student Development Committee met tonight. Elen was not there, so I'm speaking on his behalf. We discussed student performance reports and internal-
Thanks, Liz.
Assessment reporting? Sorry, not at the door. Oh, I didn't even hear it. And we had a good discussion. Gail discussed some next steps for us. We also discussed changing Southern to possibly offer some college-level courses to our students, and we'll be getting more information on that as well. So, stay tuned for more information.
Great. End of report. We are back on. Communications Committee.
Communications Committee, we did not meet tonight, but we did have a piece on the Brown Opal Project published on the website, on social media at the end of March, which, from my understanding, was widely shared and positively perceived, so that is great.
Great. End of report. Facilities.
Facilities Committee met on April 2nd, which was the night after the Tribe Board meeting, where the working group presented to the full Tribe Board and panel. And we started out with the Facilities Director's report, who report, Bill reported on the summer projects that the district is planning to move along, and they're already being lined up. We talked about the potential lease with our Lady of Mercy patrons, who are looking to lease potentially Island Avenue School. The district had provided a letter to Tom, Banish. Thank you. First electman, Banish, to notify the OLM patrons as to what items the district will be taking when we depart the building, so that they'll have a good concept in advance of what they'll need to bring in, or what will already be left behind for them, subject to the lease. The district will be out of the school about a month in advance of the withdrawal date of August 8th, I think it is. They should be out in July. And that's the goal. And then Galen gave us a rousing joint CIP and Tribe Board Working Group report, where we basically just had a discussion about what had occurred the night before during the Tribe Board presentation, and that involved our learning about the winnowing process and the 60 plans down to about five or three that the Tribe Board Working Group will be recommending to the Board of Ed. And then from there, we discussed Board of Ed process from that point, which will entail, first going through the Facilities Committee for consideration, and then to the full board. The last thing that I need to mention is that we had a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, Tuesday evening, the 14th of May, and we had, we elected to move that one day to Wednesday, the 15th, so that we have the benefit of the town referendum, which is taking place on the 14th, when we next meet. So, look for that in updated notices to the town about meetings. That's it.
Great. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee has not met since our last board meeting. However, in the, since that time, Stacy Nobitz has, as she indicated, put together language describing potential policy changes relating to the need to approve the checks that are part of our agenda each board meeting, and also potential for redoing the way we review line-item transfers. And she has supplied that information to Greg. He has yet to act on it through the-
We'll get around to it.
Let's go, Greg.
We'll get around to it.
All right. End of report.
Yes.
Personnel Committee.
Yeah, the Personnel Committee actually has met twice since our last board meeting. On March 26th, we convened to begin the process of review of central office contracts, and that ties into Agenda IO 2.2. We also convened on April 4th to begin the negotiations with the union for the support staff. This is our secretaries, our pairs, our nurses. That meeting was largely for exchange of dates, setting of dates, and exchange of rules and procedures going forward. So, we have a number of dates set forth over the next four to five weeks. End of report.
Great. Policy.
We have not met since the last meeting, and I do want to draw your attention, there are two items on the agenda that are up for first reading, classroom observations policy, and the only policy that we'll probably ever start in, end with the word policy, policy review, process policy. I want to draw your attention to that one in particular. If you have not read through that carefully, please do so between now and when we vote on it after the third reading. This was our attempt as a committee, you know, we moved this forward unanimously, but to streamline and correct, in some cases, the language in the bylaws about how we move policy forward. So, it's a pretty important one, since it's about how we proceed with a lot of our work. So, just double-check that for us, and please send any comments my way. End of report.
Okay. It's Learn Liaison, and Violet gave me her report, and if I can't find it, I will update you. Okay, here it is. But there were some, the Learn Board Directors Meeting on March 14th, there were legislative updates from Dr. Howley, who provided a summary of the letter sent to Commissioner Beth by about some of the legislative updates. The board knows that we have invited-
Kristine Cohen.
Norrie and Kokaruddin, Christine Cohen, to a June meeting to give us those updates. And the nice part about that is, there should be a budget by them, so they should be on former. And the Learn Director of Development and Innovation is acting as the Learn Liaison for logistical support. The other major news from Learn is that the Executive Director, Dr. Eileen Howley, who is amazing, tendered her resignation to the Executive Committee in February, and the Board in March announcing her retirement. So, CAEB has been selected to assist in that search.
Retirement.
And retirement. She, well, she resigned to retire again. End of report. Tribe Board Working Group for Board of Education Facilities, Mr. Bard.
Seth mentioned the, the winnowing process. Right now, the group is working, excuse me, with Colliers to develop a timeline with our ultimate goal being a presentation to the community of an option for the school facilities in May of 2020. And then from that date, backing into the timeline, which will lead to the presentation to the CIP, if we don't make the July 1st time period, why, it will be shortly after that. And we're also working with Colliers to better define the numbers that will be associated with the various options, all of which involve a four-school footprint. The lower end of the option range seems to be in the neighborhood of 125 to 130. We're working on a better definition. The upper end of the range is in the neighborhood of 165 to 170. End of report.
And the Tribe Board's continuing for a little while longer.
Apparently.
To gain some public input on the options that-
Yeah, good point, Katie. We hope to have, right now, our goal is to be far enough along with respect to the timeline and better identification of what the cause will be for the various options to be able to have a presentation in a public forum sometime around mid-May.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Katie, report.
Audience response. Oh, do you, do you have a liaison report you'd like to share with us?
No.
Okay.
Well, we have the big session tomorrow night, 6:00 PM. Come and hang out with us, see the focus on the community center, and we are gonna be discussing whether or not to have a referendum, and what that referendum question might be. So, there's some discussion about process, there's some discussion about what we want the wording of that referendum to look like, and whether or not it is necessary or not. So, it'll be an interesting conversation, to say the least.
Thank you. I need a motion, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying. Motion carries. I need an action, or, sorry, I need a motion to approve the Daniel Hand High School Science Department Chemical Hygiene Plan.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. I know that went through the Curriculum Committee, I just kind of wanted to know a little bit about it, just to blurb.
We met with our chemical safety officer, who was fabulous, and-
Paul Messick.
Paul Messick, yes, who went over it with us, and sort of the safety protocols in place, the training, the preparation, there's materials, which I believe the reference is in your packet. We have the plan in there. He instilled confidence in me, Seth, and it seems to be very, you know, considering questions, extremely knowledgeable and focused on safety.
And we are required to have one by the state, right? So, we need to adopt something. So, this is what?
We, this is actually a re-adoption of the majority of the plans. The changes that were made are under basically general employee rules and procedures after updated training, as well as some other small, minor language changes. But the bulk of the plan is, in fact, the same as the past adoption.
You went through in some detail the changes that he had implemented to make it, to make the process safer. And as Emily pointed out, it was, it was very thorough, it was very impressive, other than his socks.
Oh, that was the best part. He had radioactive socks on, too. Totally. You can see that he, this is, he's got the right job.
Passion.
Passion.
Thank you for that update.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the March 19th Board of Education meeting.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying. It was the retreat, not, yeah. I need a, so I have you abstaining here. Good. I have a, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19th Board of Education retreat.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm staying. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve that the contract of employment for four employees not be renewed for the following year based upon the reduction in force upon its expiration at the end of the 2018-19 school year, and that the Superintendent of Schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
While it gives me no joy to do this, I, I move. So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, I like to say every year when we go through this, that the Board of Ed and the district have made a firm commitment that we've kept up through many years of, of the years of contracting student enrollment, where for every 20 students we shed, we shed a faculty member, and we also follow standards for shedding administrators and other staff. And while, again, it gives us no pleasure to do this, it's one of our responsibilities as a board, and we, we keep faith with the town that way, and, you know, it's certainly nothing personal against the folks who are non-renewed for the following year, and we wish them the- who are non-renewed for the following year, and we wish them the best of luck and apologize that it has to be this way, but thank them for their service.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. I would like a motion to schedule the Daniel Hand High School commencement ceremony.
So moved.
There's no date. Do we need a date?
Probably a good date.
June 14th?
That's a good date.
I'll move, June 14th.
You move June 14th, okay. And I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
This is board policy after April 1st, the first meeting of the board games, graduation date, and it's the date that's scheduled for, it'll be the last day of school. And if, you know, we get the question every year, well, what if something happens, because it has snowed in April, then we would just take action to move the date. But as of now, June 14th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. We did that one. Any old business? Any future agenda items? Meetings and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved, and this is, just as a reminder, former 2.2.
Correct. Second? Okay, morning executive. Yo-Yo, you're out.
See ya.